You got the power, you interrupt me.
Is the system recovering from a 4th of July party weekend? No, we've had issues for a bit of intercom up there, but it's supposed to stop this kind of thing from happening. So we stopped doing it for about a year because it seemed like almost every other meeting we had to come in and reboot Talcera. And now it's starting back up again. We're not quite sure why.
Uh, we can hear now.
Sorry, they can hear?
Yeah.
We just got a little.
Said they can hear.
Test, test.
I think we verified that Bailey can hear it.
Okay, sounds like we're good. So let's continue.
Uh, so our final fund is going to be the liability claims fund. Uh, they have a budget of one hundred and fifty three thousand for miscellaneous revenue. Um, that's entirely related to uh, the anticipated insurance recovery for the annex. We do anticipate receiving that uh, within the next month or so. Uh, so so far they've only brought in about seventeen hundred, which is likely attributed to uh, miscellaneous or investment earnings.
So if we, if we have no expected liability claims, is this fund just at a zero? The beginning of the year?
Um, I'm not, I'll have to look at what they budgeted last year uh, for investment earnings. But that would be the only other source that they would be budgeting for. I don't believe we budgeted anything this year. Other financing sources has a budget of three hundred thousand and that's that transfer from the risk management fund. Um, so that was received. Services, um, so these are going to include the repairs at the annex. Um, which is what our actuals are related to. Um, we did do a budget amendment to increase this line item by one hundred and fifty three thousand. Um, I'm not anticipating that we'll uh, spend the entire budget. So I was looking at twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. Uh, we did spend about two hundred and ninety thousand uh, in services during those two years. So factoring in the annex costs of one hundred and fifty three thousand. And if we stay on trend with twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, that would put us at about four hundred and forty-three thousand for the year. And that's all I have for you. I'll um, turn it over to Scott to talk about operations.
Oh, it's plugged in. That's fine. Good morning, uh, Scott Kalian, risk analyst. Um, this is our month of performance presentation with RISK. Uh, to start off, we are, uh, RISK is taking recommendation from Homeland Security on um, recommend, highly recommending that all employees wear ID badges when inside buildings. Um, this is kind of in coordination with that HVAC Millik project at the HOJ. Um, during some of the security meetings that we've recently had, uh, it was a concern about vendors and ID badges. Um, being on site. Um, and then having those badges color-coded, whatnot. And it had occurred to us that it would probably make sense for all employees wear ID badges so that everybody is identified in those buildings. So there's no question on that. Um, we have our summer intern, she's going to assist with anybody who is needing a new badge to contact her and she can set you guys, she can set up um, anybody with a new badge um, with a new photo, so.
Scott, is that during just the Millik project? Or in, or in all buildings forever?
We're, we're thinking all buildings forever. All buildings forever.
Do I get to pick the color of my badge?
Well, I think right now the color is uh, off-white for employees. Anybody that's a vendor would have a, we haven't really pinned that down with facilities yet. Um, on what type badges vendors would have, what kind of color it would be. Or if it were a separate, or if it's just a stamp that says vendor on it, we haven't really gone that far, but um, we are just making sure that if we're going inside of a building like the HOJ and if that employee is terminated or no longer an employee, then it's easier for our security team to identify that if they do or do not have their badge. So there's multiple, multiple layers to this. It just seems like because of the HVAC Millik project that came up, we had thought that it was a good opportunity to address what Homeland Security had suggested.
So is this different than the badges that we already have?
No.
So it's just issuing a badge to everybody?
No, it's anybody who doesn't have a badge. You know, um, badges get lost, they never get renewed. Um, or they haven't been assigned at all. We're not entirely sure how many that is. Um, but we're confident that we would be able to cover anybody who's missing a badge. Um, this is just a, a slide to talk about our recent meetings with eight, the HVAC project, the Millik team uh, with facilities. Um, and that there's more security meetings in the future that are planned. I think actually Savannah said sent something this morning. So that's just kind of just an update that um, as we get closer to the HVAC Millik project, um, that all parties attended are um, are aware and um, yeah, it's going smoothly, so. All right, uh, this is the workers' compensation. This is um, our month, starting on June first and ending June thirtieth. We had, starting out eight claims open. Uh, then we got five new in June, uh, and then we closed two. Uh, this is our higher uh, month uh, for new claims this, this year. Uh, this graph is to show um, the overall claims open year-to-date, um, that's compared to the last five years. The blue bars are what um, what claims had start that year and what we have totaled currently. And the top is what we've spent so far. So in twenty twenty-five up to um, June thirtieth, we had spent a hundred and seventy-seven thousand uh, in workers' comp claims for this year, which is a bit higher than our previous years. So the trend is a little up this year.
So in those primarily, I'm not picking on departments, just nature of their work, come through our public works and, and sheriffs?
I, yeah, actually the next slide I believe actually shows that. Um, so this last month, it was mainly um, sheriff's department had quite a few open this month as well as wastewater, um, typically public works. Uh, or identified typically as public works. Um, so yeah, we've had, we've had some instances this last month and previous month, we also had some instances with Rhodes administration. And it's not any of the departments that we've had injuries so far. I mean, all the departments that we've had injuries so far are typical. Um, I don't, there's not really a a department that's not out of place. I mean, you would expect some injuries from the sheriff's department, um, from the Rhodes administration, um, jail, Parks and Rec. Um, it's just this last month has been kind of a hairy one. There's been some just some claims.
Can you go back to the previous one, please? Uh, so we're at um, significantly lower claims than last year this time? So are the claim, obviously the size of the claims is bigger. Is that, is that a trend that we're seeing? Do you know, is it just because it's a larger claim or is it because of the things that are taking place within the industry?
They are larger claims. They're more serious claims. Um, the injuries that we had in June, um, I would say, uh, let me back up. The injuries that we had in May um, had a couple of um, severity claims, higher severity claims. Um, this month, because of the raise, it was actually specifically one claim that we had to pay out. Uh, there was a, an error in one of the payouts for the claims. So they had to catch up eight months. So it was a substantial payout. Um, regardless though, it's still, these claims that we have open right now are more higher in severity. We have, I believe, four time loss claims currently. Um, we were down to three and then we just got another one. So, um, I would say probably as a whole, yeah, there is some associated costs. But I think it's mainly just how many of, how high or severity of claims are.
What was the nature of the mistake? You said it was for eight months?
It was a eight-month payout that, no, the, there's a miscalculation. So the calculation was supposed to put in for um, time loss disability. And it didn't calculate correctly. So there was a substantial amount of money owed to that individual.
Okay.
And it wasn't caught until last month.
So Scott, with this, with the severe, I, obviously in the situation, the severity of the claims is what's caused the increase. But with increased insurance premiums and healthcare costs, I, is the risk pool talking about what we can do to help mitigate some of this stuff moving forward? Because that, those expenses are not going to go down.
Yeah, the, so risk pool doesn't touch workers' compensation, unfortunately. So we're kind of on our own on this one. Um, there is, I guess the best way to reduce a workers' comp claim on cost is to get them back to work into the state that they were before they were injured. In the long run, it actually is more beneficial for all parties. In the short run, it's more expensive because of vocational training. You have to do um, some physical therapies typically associated with these high severities, surgery. But to get them back into the, or do our best to get them back into the condition previously to their injury is more of a long-term benefit. And we don't really see that in this graph. It's really hard to calculate that because you don't really see uh, what you would, I mean, a return on investment on something like that. I mean, you could probably run the numbers, but it, it wouldn't, it wouldn't really pan out on how much money you lost in missing a worker. So this, um, I would say prevention, injury prevention and um, uh, getting the worker back to health, to a healthy state is probably the best we can do.
It's a I can, I can understand rising costs, but you, when you look at the three-year graph, you, you hate seeing that keep on the uphill uh, trend. But what I'm hearing you say is, is these things are fairly normal, the injuries that have happened. And we're, there's I, I guess the only thing I'm concerned about is there in some kind of did we not follow safety standards or is it just one of those things that happen? Or do we have a glitch in some of our safety that is, I mean, that's what, what I'm looking for. I can, I can understand totally that costs are going up. The only thing we can really control is to make sure we're doing things in a safe and proper manner. And, and I don't, and I don't know how to judge that.
Yeah, um, it's a really, really good point. And that really comes down to um, the injuries that we had this last year, there are a few that were totally preventable.
So have, have, wherever they happened, have we recognized that and made, have they made some changes to fix that?
Yes, yeah, we have. Um, there are some that are just not, our higher severity one was um, there's, I mean, that injury was just a, it was just a bad timing.
And I can totally understand it. I just want to I don't, I, I want to make sure we don't set ourselves up to, to problems. And, and if you're telling me that, hey, we identified a couple of things and we corrected them, I think that's the route we should always go and hopefully we're always doing that.
Yeah, every injury that comes through, we, we look at it with a, with a fine-tooth comb and we, we try to figure out what, what caused it.
I guess it boils down, I don't want our practices to be a conduit to, to injury.
Yeah, any uh, any safety risk that's identified in um, in these injuries, we, we try to eliminate and we try to mitigate.
Okay.
And it doesn't matter if the employee themselves were negligent in the incident, we're still
Oh, yeah, we're still, yeah, it doesn't really matter what the the employee could have done everything wrong, we're still, we're still liable for it. The best we can do is to retrain that employee and to coach him or her and to you know, maybe share those results with the group. That seems to have actually some sort of effect. We've had a couple of those. Um, and um, awareness is, is a good tool. Now we're on liability claims. This is with the risk pool. Um, not much has moved. We had two new claims this, uh, I'm sorry. That should have been changed to June, so my apologies. New claims during June were two and we had closed one during June. Um, which leaves us at twelve. We had not moved on any of the litigations as far as I am aware, so we're still at ten. We had not moved on any of the litigations as far as I am aware, so we're still at 10 currently. Any questions?
No. Appreciate your time, Scott.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Suzie, I have a question for you that is totally not on this. And I, I really don't expect you to have the answer, but I'd like us to, maybe you do have the answer, but I'd like us to look at it just a little bit. I, I read an article out of Cent- Centrayan newspaper. The commissioners up there are working on a resolution, basically saying they'll comply with ICE. They're basically saying they'll comply with the law. And the reason given for it is that their county is listed as a sanctuary county in there. And, and I'm taking the newspaper articles, so take it with a little bit of grain of, grain of salt here, that they get everything correct. But the reason they're giving for wanting to do this, because if they don't get off the list, they're afraid that they'll lose millions. And they use a big number in dollars of funding from the Fed. And I don't know how much of that is real concern versus how much of that is political positioning. You always get that they could want. So my question is, I'm not aware that we get, I know we get some Fed grant funds when we do road projects and stuff. But my question is, are we reliant heavily on, on Fed funds? Or, or maybe you could look at that a little bit and I don't, I'm not aware that we are. And so I, I kind of took the article with a little bit of grain of salt. I, I felt like it was more political grandstanding and actual fund loss. But I want to make sure that we're not looking at any jeopardy here.
Um, I can actually get you a copy of the 2024 CIFA. So that actually shows how much grant funding the county received from the feds in 2024. Public Works and Health Department are the two largest depart, they receive most of the federal funding. But another example would be the county receives federal funds for nutrition and that's providing meals within the jail facility. So that's just another example of federal funding that we used. But I can get you the total on those.
Yeah, would you mind sending that to all three of us? I don't, I, I, I don't imagine the feds would, you and a lottery cut off everything. I mean, of course, they, they could, but we always live under the threat of somebody's going to say, no, we're not going to give that money anymore. I mean, that threat's always there, right? And the way they're positioning it in Lewis County is if they don't do this, they're going to lose that. And I'm not sure I buy totally into that, but, but I don't want to be caught off guard. So, yeah, if you could send that out to us, that'd be good. Okay, we don't have anything to.
You know, I'm not talking about that question, Commissioner Doll. I wonder how that affects, if that's the case, our emergency response, you know, stuff. Because a lot of that's federal, isn't it FEMA and?
Well, i- if you have to file with that, yeah, that would be FEMA and stuff. I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure. I mean, I, I've, I've seen the feds say you need to comply, but it's basically been directed to states. I haven't seen them break it down and say, if you're a contributor to sanctuary county, we're not sending you money. I haven't seen that.
No.
It doesn't mean it can't happen.
Yeah.
And Lewis County has taken the track that it could happen and they want to, although their resolution basically says they'll follow every rule they're doing now, they just want to get off the list.
I wonder how much, how much of this federal funds that comes to the state that passes through to us that gets cut off at the level?
Some of that comes into HH S. And we asked Gina that question and we didn't really get into some of those programs that, that those came through. So last she said, we don't have a huge exposure because we didn't get it. Some counties do have a huge exposure because they were still into COVID funds that were coming and stuff. And we never took those.
I guess we wait and see how bad the hammer falls on.
Yeah, it could be a big nothing burger, but I'd rather not be caught by surprise if possible. Since we have two departments here, do you want to take them and let them get back to work or should we recess till 10?
I'm good with moving if they are.
Go ahead. You want to go ahead and finances up?
Suzie Finance Manager. So tomorrow we have a request for a public hearing related to our quarter three budget amendment, which is scheduled for August 12th at 9:30.
Okay. And that's for, that's quarter three, okay?
August 12th at 9:30, okay.
Ms. Kim?
Good morning. Kim Bokat with the Event Center, this morning actually representing tourism. Tomorrow on the agenda, I have a contract with you or for you to sign with Fine Consulting or Fine Design Group. This contract is the culmination of several meetings, a desire to have a comprehensive tourism plan for Calhoun County that has not been done for at least a decade or more. It started, I shouldn't say it. So this process started, we, we gathered the city managers from all the cities in Calhoun County, as well as Commissioner Doll and myself, and started brainstorming, what do we need to do to move towards?
Also the ports.
And the ports, yes, correct, Port of Klamah in Longview.
Yeah, when I, I, I was trying to explain this a little bit to my colleagues. The only one that didn't, that was invited, but hasn't participated so far has been Woodland City and Woodland Port.
Correct.
Right, okay.
Correct. So as we met, we talked about, you know, we didn't really go into the history of tourism in Calhoun County because we don't live there anymore. We need to move forward. We need to see what the opportunity is for tourism in Calhoun County to move forward in a positive direction and work cohesively with the cities. The money for Calhoun County tourism is generated by a lodging tax. And over the years, there's been a little bit of controversy. Once Hofstadt Bluffs sold, there was excess money. And the cities are, you know, wanting to know what we're doing with that. And, and so we've been trying to expend that money in our regional tourism program. But, you know, since COVID, things have changed, the way people travel has changed. And we think that there's opportunity to move forward in a better direction. So with that being said, we had, we had meetings with the cities and the ports. And it was deemed that we really just need a roadmap. So that roadmap, we decided to do a destination marketing analysis is what we thought was needed. So we went out for a proposal and received, I believe, 12 different proposals from different companies from Vancouver, Portland area, all the way to North Carolina. The group that we chose was Fine Design Group. Fine is currently working or has currently worked, has worked in the past and is currently working with the Port of Klamah for their marketing analysis. The Port of Klamah was present and had positive things to say as we scored each group that has done really great things with, with the Port of Klamah. So with a little bit of history there, they have knowledge of our area already, at least with Klamah. So one of the five cities is already, they've kind of done, done a deep dive into them. That was the group that we chose. Their fee is $118,000. And that will, they'll be looking into Calhoun County tourism as a whole, and then they'll look into each city. And so the idea was how we could, I, I believe we're all kind of in our silos. Every city collects a lodging tax also, so they're spending it in their way. The county is spending it in our way. And I think that there could be a better collaboration between all of us. And so that is the hope with this destination marketing analysis.
The, the funds for this are out of the lodging tax. We, we have those available. It's not a, an expense.
Correct.
And the reason, the way we're set up in this county is the, this group can't sign this contract. It has to be signed by the, by the county.
Correct. So the, the lodging tax funds, to go back to the funding, lodging tax monies can only be spent in very specific ways. There's RCW is telling us how we can spend this money. So the county's collections can only be spent this way. This is an appropriate use of funding. This is not any new money that's being asked for. This is not any general fund money. This is lodging tax money that is being spent on this to hopefully better tourism to our county. What was your second question? I apologize.
Well, you don't have the, even though it's, you kind of oversee the lodging tax and you have this group together, they can't tell you to sign this.
Oh, correct.
Because the way we're set up, the county actually has to sign this agreement.
Correct, correct. Yes, the county manages these lodging tax funds and so, yes, we have to enter into this contract.
And so they're going to go and do an evaluation of all of the municipalities within Calhoun County, not just the unincorporated areas.
Correct, cities and unincorporated areas. And I brought a copy of their proposal for you, if you'd like to review it as to what they're going to be doing.
I think it's a good idea myself.
Yeah.
Everybody coming together to make that happen.
When I was trying to explain it and you do a better job than I did, I really said to, what I've tried to be, my role on there is actually pretty, pretty silent. I'm more interested in their ideas of how the county can interact with it than me telling them how we're going to interact and they, they working around it. So it's, it's, I think there's some good people on there.
I think so. So we have, we've had a Calhoun County Tourism Department since, I believe they enacted the tax in 1995 or 1996. And that was to create a regional tourism program. And also they built Hofstadt Bluffs Visitor Center with this funding. There wasn't a lot of money in the beginning and now there is more and more money. So we do have a lodging tax advisory committee made up of five different people that approves the use of these funds. This is part of that budget that they've approved. But the group that we met with was not the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. It was the group of city leaders, just really trying to be proactive in how we move forward. Our, our county tourism department, I oversee the budget. We have one tourism assistant. She's been with us for just about 10 years and does a great job placing advertising, working on geo fencing and how can we market Mount St. Helens and Calhoun County as a whole? I think she's doing a great job, but I think that there's definitely, as I said, since COVID, there's a different, there's a change in how people are traveling, how they're getting their information. And, you know, we're kind of, I don't want to say we're in our little vacuum here, but we kind of are. There's, there's one person working full-time on this and probably about 10% of my time is spent on this. So I think having this company come in and really help all of us work together, see the good, bad and the ugly, basically. I think there's a lot of things that we become nose-blind to. And I think that we can, we can make improvements as a county and then as our cities as well. And then hopefully this will help us to move forward altogether. We all are collecting this lodging tax and how can we best spend this to bring everybody to all of our communities? Instead of being in our, currently, we're all in a little silo doing our own little things and.
Yeah. I think what stuck out to me is when you're talking about how they track who's in there. Klamah uses a system and, and I don't know that Cast Rock has a system. I mean, it's just everybody kind of doing their, their own thing. And it, it just felt like if, if we could be on the same work and share it with, with everybody, it'd just make more sense. So I didn't have any problem with where they were going with this and the, and the money spent on it.
And it's been a great group. It was, you know, we, we started meeting and, and everybody, like you said, everybody's kind of doing their own thing. Everybody has a different level of expertise. Some cities are just using that lodging tax to, to fund grants and they don't do anything to market themselves. Others are trying to find more grant money to do more. Some are hosting events. I mean, there's a lot of, everybody's kind of doing something a little bit different. But I don't think anybody has the money to spend on a destination marketing analysis. And I think as the county kind of taking the lead on this, I think will, will be really beneficial for everybody because all boats rise. So, and really, when you're in New Jersey, nobody knows where Calhoun County, Washington is. And so one of the big complaints that we hear is, wow, you know, you're just marketing Mount St. Helens. And, and as we all know that, you know, anybody that travels, when you go somewhere and you say, well, where do you live? And if you say, well, I live in Calhoun County, Washington, they're going to look at you like, that is so great, wherever that is. Or they say, you say Washington State and they go, oh, Seattle. There's a lot of different things that people will say when you're traveling. But if you say, do you know Mount St. Helens, the volcano? Oh, yeah, yeah, that's where, that's where I'm from. People know that. And that's what, that's that anchor that brings international travel here. So how can we expand on that? We, we've got that anchor, we're brought, we're bringing them in. How can our cities draw them into their communities and, and keep them here for more than a day?
I think this, a couple of the stories that were told, this fine group is out of Portland. And they get pretty detailed, I think. And I probably don't have this 100% correct, but Klamah Port uses them. And one of the questions, why would people stop at Klamah? You know, and it got down to, you come off the freeway and your sidewalks are growing grass and this, I mean, just that, that, that kind of detail, they're, they were paying attention to.
Yeah, the trash on the, on the off-ramps. They said it's not welcoming when there's trash on the off-ramps.
So all the municipalities and ports were all on board?
Yes, yep.
The only ones that aren't, and I think we're still asking, is the city of Woodland, Port of Woodland, if they'd like to be involved?
Yep, the city of Woodland and the ports have, have been invited to all of our meetings. They've been given all the updates from our, our meetings. There's a couple of different people from those areas on our email list. Once we move forward, this group will be doing stakeholder meetings. I would guess that they'll probably meeting with county and city leaders as well as just, you know, stakeholders within our communities, the, the lodging operators, the, the people that aren't wanting to come to the table right now down in Woodland because they're a big city in our county, so.
Is there a sense as to why they're not? No? Interesting.
I've heard there's been some changeover in their chamber. There's been some, so once we get, once we get fine on board, I will actually reach out and explain what we're doing because I know how emails are and, you know, sometimes you just, they just get buried. This doesn't, this isn't the top of my priority list and it gets buried. But I think they'll find that it is, it needs to come to the top of their priority list because it will benefit them.
Do you know who, like the city of Woodland, was it just sent to the mayor?
I would have to look, but I believe so. And then it was also sent to Jennifer.
I was going to take a run down there tonight for their council. I'll just ask Todd, how come you guys aren't sitting on this?
I was just going to be at the meeting tonight and bring it up, but yeah, you can do it.
Yep. I believe it's gone to three people in Woodland and I can, I can get you that information.
Okay, anything else? Getting ready for fair, are you?
We are getting ready for fair. My whole staff has all their T-shirts on. I said, oh, I've got meetings today, but.
We're going to sell out rodeo all, all three days again? We're going to sell out rodeo all, all three days again?
It, so historically, everybody had to come buy their pre-sale tickets in the office. And so our staff for the first five days of July, business days of July was just crazy with rodeo tickets. The first 45 minutes, we had sold over 200 tickets.
Wow.
Only three of them were in person. So, yeah, the power of online, it was.
Yeah, that's cool.
Crazy. And you can buy your parking online this year too. So that's a new thing. And so we've, we've been selling, pre-selling some parking, so that'll help the Kiwanis.
I was going to say, is Kiwanis freaking out because they're, they're still getting whatever they get out, right?
Yes.
Cause that's a fundraiser for them. I know that.
We've kind of restructured how the parking's going to work. It used to be just cash only, Kiwanis, you know, that taking money and, and just to be frank, there's a lot of people standing out there with aprons full of money. And so going online, it did when we met with them, they kind of went, woo, I don't know about this. So search and rescue is going to be helping them also, helping with the sales. And so, you know, the first year with everything, there's going to be some, some kinks to work out. But I think overall it'll be good. We're really trying to get that messaging out to get your parking in advance, save, save time, so.
Cool.
We're going to try it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks, Kim.
Thank you.
Okay. We need to take a recess till 10, when Public Works comes in, okay?
You go to migraine?
Oh, man.
Well, I understand the Mr. Ferrell has something for it.
What's your poison?
He gladly sell you.
Recession under tender review, we're down to public works, you guys. Looks like you're the bulk of tomorrow anyways.
Well, we can go in order.
Okay. So good morning, Susan Eugenius County Engineer. We have multiple items, both consent and motion. So the first two consent items are local agency agreements supplements for the South Cloverdale Road project and the South Cloverdale Road Confer Road Intersection Improvements. These local agency agreements are. Wash dot changed their mind about what was and was not eligible. So we have moved items around on the funding lines and that is all this represents. There's no change in the amount of funding. There's just changes in what their funding is being applied to, if that makes any sense.
So item two and three, we're not asking for money. We're just reshuffling because Wash dot has changed some of the rules.
Yes, so we're just reshuffling the money for the Kalama Waterline from one line item to another. Amounts, all the amounts remain the same. This was a late in the game change. All of a sudden, we're getting the contract executed and they're going, oh, wait, you can't pay for the waterline out of this funding source because you don't own the waterline, even though it's municipally owned waterline. And we've done this in the past. So it was just a change of their philosophy. We've moved money around to make everything work.
So it's fair to say it's just a change in the allocation source?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Number five on the consent agenda is a amendment with ALS Environmental. They are a testing agency. This is a second amendment with them. We're requesting a hundred thousand dollar increase and a one-year extension on that. We would anticipate a third one in the future as well. Pricing has not changed. Annually, we on average spend between forty and fifty thousand dollars. And that's both between water sewer and solid waste. But it can escalate depending on what happens and when. So just want to make sure we have headroom there. And if we don't use it, we don't use it.
You said this is the second extension and it's the same pricing as the first contract we did?
Same pricing as the first amendment.
Okay, and we expect the third one, how many extensions before we rebid?
One more.
One more?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, just had to make a quick note.
I just didn't want to jump ahead of you writing the notes. So our final item is the motion item number seven, and it's change order number one to the Lake Slide Industry Contract for the overlay for this year. We've requested that they add an additional three hundred and fifteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars worth of overlay. This is for just adding additional roads because we had additional money in our budget. So since we received a good bid and they were willing to add more area on the unit price, we have gone ahead and added, requested that they add an additional, worked out to two thousand, three hundred and twenty-two additional tons and two thousand, eight hundred and ninety-three square yards of grinding. So this would increase the contract to just over two point eight million dollars with this three hundred and fifteen thousand dollar change order. And we're added, some of the roads we added to, a third of it is on Coal Creek Road. So that is a heavily traveled road. And we've also added some to Tower, Old Ninety-Nine South, Harmony Drive, Stella and Woodside. So we've added additional areas, not. It's not a change because of something that occurred in the field. It was our request that they add more since we had remaining budget.
Budget capacity.
Yes, we had budgeted almost three million dollars for this this year. So we have increased it.
How many miles of road is that going to cover?
Well, now you asked me the hard question because I didn't convert it to miles. I did it in tons. I'd have to go back and pull that number. I can have it tomorrow for the total and this addition.
I have seen the road crews throughout the county putting down new stuff. It looks good.
I think they're about halfway through their chip seal program. So Kalama and Kelso pretty much wrapped up and moving northward.
Yeah, I saw they got Pleasant Hill, it looks good.
Good.
Yeah.
We'll let the crew know. We'll let the crew know.
Yeah. Okay.
That's all we have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We'll see you tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ash.
Is she available now? Oh, okay. We can just move right in. I see you're available. Okay, so we'll just move right into HR stuff.
So one of my executive sessions is here. Performance of a public employee.
And you are who?
Oh, sorry, Jessica Warren, HR.
Okay. Executive session, performance of a public employee. How many minutes do you think, Jessica?
Let's say ten.
Okay. Is that the only thing you have?
I had a collective bargaining one as well, but they're not here yet. So hopefully they'll be here by the time this one's done.
Okay, so we'll go back to executive session, performance of a public employee, ten minutes. Okay?
The board is extending the executive session an additional five minutes. The board is extending the executive session an additional five minutes. The board is extending the executive session an additional ten minutes. The board is extending the executive session an additional ten minutes. The board is extending the executive session an additional ten minutes.
The board is extending the executive session an additional 10 minutes.
The board is extending the executive session an additional 10 minutes.
Somebody stole their ship and so Israel.
Who's he stole? A British ship and Israel won it. According to that headline.
Okay, back from executive session. What decisions rendered? Think we wanted an executive session?
Yes.
Is that right?
Say your session for employee performance review.
And time wise, do you think?
I'm gonna guess 30 minutes.
Wow, okay. Okay, we'll go back to exec. Performance of employee 30.
The board is extending the executive session an additional 10 minutes.
Somebody stole their ship and so Israel.
Who's he stole? A British ship and Israel won it. According to that headline.
Okay, back from executive session. What decisions rendered? Think we wanted an executive session?
Yes.
Is that right?
Say your session for employee performance review.
And time wise, do you think?
I'm gonna guess 30 minutes.
Wow, okay. Okay, we'll go back to exec. Performance of employee 30.
Somebody stole their ship and so Israel.
Who's he stole? A British ship and Israel won it. According to that headline.
Okay, back from executive session. What decisions rendered? Think we wanted an executive session?
Yes.
Is that right?
Say your session for employee performance review.
And time wise, do you think?
I'm gonna guess 30 minutes.
Wow, okay. Okay, we'll go back to exec. Performance of employee 30.
Somebody stole their ship and so Israel.
Who's he stole? A British ship and Israel won it. According to that headline.
Okay, back from executive session. What decisions rendered? Think we wanted an executive session?
Yes.
Is that right?
Say your session for employee performance review.
And time wise, do you think?
I'm gonna guess 30 minutes.
Wow, okay. Okay, we'll go back to exec. Performance of employee 30.
Somebody stole their ship and so Israel.
Who's he stole? A British ship and Israel won it. According to that headline.
Okay, back from executive session. What decisions rendered? Think we wanted an executive session?
Yes.
Is that right?
Say your session for employee performance review.
And time wise, do you think?
I'm gonna guess 30 minutes.
Wow, okay. Okay, we'll go back to exec. Performance of employee 30.
Somebody stole their ship and so Israel.
Who's he stole? A British ship and Israel won it. According to that headline.
Okay, back from executive session. What decisions rendered? Think we wanted an executive session?
Yes.
Is that right?
Say your session for employee performance review.
And time wise, do you think?
I'm gonna guess 30 minutes.
Wow, okay. Okay, we'll go back to exec. Performance of employee 30. And time wise, do you think?
I'm gonna guess 30 minutes.
Wow, okay. Okay, we'll go back to exec. Performance of employee 30. And time wise, do you think?
I'm gonna guess 30 minutes.
Wow, okay. Okay, we'll go back to exec. Performance of employee 30. And time wise, do you think?
I'm gonna guess 30 minutes.
Wow, okay. Okay, we'll go back to exec. Performance of employee 30. And time wise, do you think?
I'm gonna guess 30 minutes.
Wow, okay. Okay, we'll go back to exec. Performance of employee 30. And time wise, do you think?
I'm gonna guess 30 minutes.
Wow, okay. Okay, we'll go back to exec. Performance of employee 30. And time wise, do you think?
I'm gonna guess 30 minutes.
Wow, okay. Okay, we'll go back to exec. Performance of employee 30. And time wise, do you think?
I'm gonna guess 30 minutes.
Wow, okay. Okay, we'll go back to exec. Performance of employee 30.